We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A call to order in this meeting of the Mongeay County Commission for November the 13th, 2020. And we'll begin with consent and approval. Renata, good morning.
Good morning. We have notes on orations this morning, vouchers, general county fund, 506,003,7495, 911, 2,89106, Chestnut Ridge Park, 8,08508, Camp Muffley, 3,05143, Mason Dixon Park, 1,072712, transportation levy, 170,46139, recreation levy, 7,26250, library levy, 41,83958, reallocated coal, 27,37814, assessor's valuation, 22,64938, payroll, 1,69181022, Star City TIF, 212,57112, Morgantown Industrial TIF, $41,006.59, Mont General TIF, 4193552, and University Town Center TIF, 1,48849491. Purchasing card vouchers, general county fund, 18,65733, coal severance, 11043, 911, 8,20150, Chestnut Ridge Park, 79047, Camp Muffley, 94983, Mason Dixon Park, 5621, assessor's valuation, 664, for a voucher total of $4,674,068.76. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, Mon County Planning Commission, Mon Gay County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, abandoned dilapidated enforcement agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, Region Six Planning Development Council, Historic Landmarks Commission, and Mountain Air Trail Network Authority. Fiduciary orders for November 13th, 2020, and we have a third quarter file status report for Ryan Umina and Beth LeBeau.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any introductions of new employees or personnel changes? I've seen none listed. Colleen, do we have grants?
Comments from the public?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not gonna let them speak today.
Comments from the public. We're open for comments from the public. We are now closed for comments from the public. Colleen, grants?
I have one more prepared.
That's all right.
I have a request for reimbursement for the Voca grant in the amount of $7,723.03.
Okay. Move for approval?
Second.
Properly moved and second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Didn't mean to try and trick you there. Correspondence?
Commissioner, I don't actually have anything, but I think Commissioner Secor does.
Okay.
Yes, I have one thing. I have the letter from the MMPO to the Dominion Post that delegate Statlers, actually it was Bill Austin. It was a very good letter, and also Bill did a very good job on the radio the other day, but I'd like to enter that into the record. And the other letter I have is, I don't know where it went.
I told him looking for one.
Hold on one second. I saved it in a file. It was a letter from the Fort Martin community that was forwarded to us by Stephen Nelson. Do you see, I'm not gonna say his position because I'm not sure of his exact position, but sent from Stephen Nelson of Fort Martin. And the letter basically is to Fort Martin saying to him it made concern. On Monday, November 2nd, the board of Fort Martin Church was informed of discussions regarding the move of Fort Martin Schoolhouse located on Route 53 in Maesville to the Mason Dixon Historical Park. This letter is to formally notify Longview Power LLC, the Mon Gay County Commission, and West Virginia Public Service Commission that the below signed board and community members of the Fort Martin community do not support relocation of the Fort Martin Schoolhouse. Instead, we appreciate any available funds used to continue the maintenance of the outside surrounding area of the building and for any possible restoration of building that would ensure that it is structurally sound. Thank you, as signed by Ms. Rose Iverson, Mr. Ed Cogar, Lucille Jameson, Wanda Brodsky, and additional Fort Martin communities, which there are signatures without names. So I want, Stephen Nelson had sent that to us because he wanted to let us know that we had been in conversations with them about that facility. And Fort Martin was in support of whatever the community wanted. And they actually met with the community to figure out what they wanted, and that letter is to formally let them know that they don't want to move the facility. So Stephen sent the email and a letter to me, and Renata said, "Longview has been in touch with Fort Martin community regarding the potential move of the schoolhouse. We expressed our willingness to move the schoolhouse only if the Fort Martin community agreed. They had significant issues with moving the building and strongly expressed their desire to keep the structure where it is at. Attaches are written and signed acknowledgement of this. Longview's intent is to maintain the structure to the best of our ability per the community's request. Longview considers this subject closed." So there have been a lot of questions that have come to us about what they were gonna do with the building and Longview, and we have said all along, it's whatever the community wants.
Right.
And that's what the community wants. So sorry for the long-winded correspondence, but I wanted to make sure that we read that.
I also have one too.
So be it. Okay, Tom?
This letter came from Dominic Claudio, and he was concerned and asked us if we were aware of the rate increases in the gas bill. And then he listed the rate increases, and he was very concerned and asking if there's anything that the community can do or any concerns they could have. He's looking for assistance as a citizen, public official, business owner, employer, and West Virginia native. And I pass that on to, I just put in the public because the rate increase actually goes into effect, I believe, this month.
This month.
Or next month. Yeah. Okay.
Any other correspondence? Hearing none. We'll move to unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business?
No, sir.
New business first. First reading regarding the Mon Gay County Planning Commission Resolution P02-20 for amendment to the West Run Planning District zoning map from industrial, M-2, to general commercial, C-2, for the properties legally described as Morgan Tax Map 4A parcels 19 and 19.1.
Move for first reading.
Second. Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of appointment to the West Run Board of Zoning Appeals.
Received an application from Frank Oliverio. As you know, we've had this posted for quite some time. Frank, Mr. Oliverio lives on Maple Lane, which is within the West Run District.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And thank him for volunteering. I don't think we have to interview him. I think we all know.
Yes.
So, yes. Next. Consideration of requisition number 47 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Requisition is for 434,97646, and those funds will be transferred towards the paying off the bonds.
And this is the regular deposit into the sales tax from the sales tax district less the $100,000 statutory lien and tax administration fees. So move that we approve requisition 47 as presented?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
To consider the approval, the letter of compliance received from Dale Steger, State Tax Commissioner, regarding the certification of substantial completion of additional duties by the Mon Gay County Assessor according to West Virginia Code 7-7-6A.
Move to approve letter of compliance as presented?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Consideration to approve the settlement agreement and release of claims regarding the Civil Action Number 19-C-480, the Mon Gay County Development Authority versus Mon Gay County Commission, PM Long &amp; Son Incorporated, and Eldon A. Callen.
Move to pull this agreement from the agenda, and I'll explain why.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Pull from this from the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
It is called.
This settlement ingredient was to be approved today, but it was predicated on the settlement of the South Co. versus Development Authority lawsuit, which was supposed to be settled on the 10th, on Tuesday. That hearing was continued till December 1st, so we can't finalize this settlement until that settlement is finalized.
All right. Next. Consideration to approve RFP Day Number 2020 MCC-CM001 for renovations and modifications to the Camp Muffley pool.
Move to approve with discussion?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded?
This, we've long been discussing this project. It actually was a project that was on the first 2016 levy call. So we've been going back and forth about the most efficient way to deal with this pool. And I believe we found a happy medium. What we're anticipating doing is having a vendor that's going to basically do a fiberglass insert of the existing structure, so it'll save us some money in that regard. And we're still gonna be able to use some of the equipment, but this is the actual RFP. So it's, we approve it. It goes out today. It'll be published in the paper. We have a mandatory pre-bid conference on the 1st of December. And then we have a period for written questions. It will due by the 11th. Proposals will be due on the 16th, and we'll open the morning. Our meeting on the 16th.
To support what Sean said, I think this is an exceptional collaboration agreement between all three county commissioners. We came up with a great compromise. The citizens have voted for the levy, and I look forward to this project. Ed, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add?
I actually just want to comment that I think up in heaven Paul Dussrow is smiling. Because I know how long he had lobbied to try and improve this.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. To consider for approval, the proposal CDI 20-215 submitted by Controlled Demolition Incorporated regarding the emergency demolition of the Catherine's Knob Communication Tower.
Move for approval?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
I just wanna add, this is an evolved project. It's an emergency project. We have Mike Fortney from our 911 center here to talk about it if anybody has any particular questions. But this is one piece. Our tower has been failing, and we've recently had an engineering study that said it needed to come down as soon as possible. So CDI has exclusive capability to this regard in regards to explosives and being able to detonate and bring down the tower and control the fall. So we're lucky to be able to get them. If we weren't able to squeeze this in, they would be going out of the country, and our options are very limited. So this is something that, we've been monitoring this for months, probably a year. And it's gotten to the point, as we come up on winter, I know we've had some nice weather lately, but the first bad frost, we have some real concerns from the engineers that this tower would be an issue, and we'd have to do something about it.
If I may ask, the only question is, are they planning to do that next week? Just why we had to do an emergency situation? I think that's why.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Are they planning to do that next week? Because this was an emergency. Yeah.
Yeah, they're actually getting ready to go out of the country. They were just, they're leaving the end of the week to go to Peru for a year to do a bunch of demolition work.
So we were.
Lucky that they're just right over in Maryland. They already had all the permits to truck the stuff across state lines. And so they're fully, they're the only ones fully licensed.
Okay.
And I just wanna be completely transparent that, again, there's a number of pieces to this puzzle.
Yes.
This is the first one. We also have a project management agreement with Premier.
Construction.
Premier Construction. Premier Construction now will be the next item coming up, and they're also gonna do the demo cleanup for us. And then we will have a piggyback contract with an entity to, that same entity to purchase the actual tower and another piggyback contract that we'll utilize to install the tower. And then in between that, once the tower comes down and it's cleaned up, we have to have an engineering study done.
Right.
So all this is very highly specialized, and there aren't a lot of people that do this type of work. So thanks to your staff for, you know, staying on top of this. And we'll have, we'll have three other agreements that will be coming up in future meetings as we finalize those. But again, I want the public to be aware that we're utilizing our ability under the statute to do emergency procurements and also do piggyback procurements in the interest of time and dollars. So anything I need to add to that, Mike? No, sir. Everything's on, all the demolition company and the recycling company already have dozers and track hoes setting up there waiting.
Great.
Now, in conjunction with that, next is to consider for approval of proposal from Premier Construction Corp. LLC for the emergency removal of the debris from the demolition of the Catherine's Knob Communication Tower.
Move for approval?
Second. And properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
And to be clear on the CDI, the total value of that contract is 24,000, which also falls under our purchasing threshold that actually requires competition. So we're completely above board. And then the project, the second is the project management with Premier and the demo cleanup, which is a total of 18,300, 14,800 for the cleanup and then 3,500 to manage all aspects of this continuing process. So a little extra detail.
Keeping in mind also that this will have some affecting the Daybrook and Fairview area of cellular service during the time that the tower is gone until communication is reestablished.
The service is primarily US Cellular.
US Cellular, yes.
And Mike's staff has been working for, Jimmy, Mike's staff has been working with them to provide temporary service. And again, we're doing this so quickly to get that, to get a new tower up. 911 has made accommodations for emergency response in that area. So there's, they've pretty much covered everything, but people in that area may notice a degrading of their cellular if they have US Cellular as a customer. But US Cellular is working to make that difference as nominal as possible.
Okay. That is it for all new business. We will now have reports from elected officials. Joe, would you care to address us?
Yours will be easier.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come in before you. I will say that the first thing is, I want to request that I could have a meeting with you gentlemen at some time in the near future because I need to know what your concerns are. And I think I know some of them. I don't know them all. And share with you what I believe could be some of the things that will be coming down in the next session. I can share a little bit with you. Again, I've been in contact about every day, talking to someone down in Charleston. But everything is just the same as it is with you guys, this little bit of fluid moving. And if you, we have on the 5th, as a Republican Party, we will caucus at Stone Ball Resort for one day. Then we will go to Charleston the next day to caucus there. That will probably be the one where we set up a little bit of how the caucus wants to move forward and what's possibly on the agenda. One of the things that I have been told, that there's a possibility, just so you would know, that the session by law, we're called in on the 13th of January. Then we will just take care of some minor things that has to go on the elected, and that's when you would elect the speakers, that type of thing. And the Senate would do their work. Then we will adjourn until, yeah, I think it's the 13th of February because you gotta allow the governor time to get some things together and also for his inauguration. And that's just in code. That's the way it's been. But there is also some talk, and whether it will take place, I did talk to the Majority Chair last night, Amy Summers. She didn't think it would happen, but there's some others that's at least thinking about. There's a possibility that the session could be delayed 90 days or more, maybe end April or May. And this is just a possibility. Somebody higher pay grade than I will make these decisions. And, but that is something that could possibly affect the county and the school systems. So I just wanted to make you aware. At this time, Amy says she doesn't believe so. She believes we'll go in February. There certainly will be some changes to how we operate down there in committees and that type of thing. So that much information I could bring forward to you today, at least to, in your planning, you can at least think about it. What will it mean to you if that happens or doesn't happen? Will it affect you at all? You know, the taxing structure. There is some people that would like to see just go into session, approve the budget, which by law we have to do, and just, that's it. Go out of session. There doesn't seem to be a lot of thought on that. My biggest thing that I would say to the county, and we spoke about it before, and again, I don't know for sure just by talking to some on both sides. You know, taxing structure is going to be one of the things that the legislature is probably gonna look at. And how deep in they will do that, I don't know. And you know that as well as I do. When you open that can of worms, anything can come wiggling out. And you got 100 members on the House side, 34 on the Senate side, and anybody can bring forth what they think is the best for the state. So I do know one thing that has been out there, and you guys are keenly aware of it, is the inventory tax. So that is basically what, one thing that I'd like to sit down and talk to you about and get your thoughts and everything on that and other issues. So that's why I'm here today, just to bring that forward. I do wanna say that I did go, I think it was Wednesday this week for the COVID testing, and I will say kudos to the Health Department. They've done a very efficient job up there as the way they's doing it was steady. Have no idea how many went through, but there's probably from the time I stood, get in there, in and out, I don't know, maybe five, six minutes. So it wasn't that bad of timing. And a little bit of discomfort, but nothing that I haven't experienced before. So I would say to you all that that's a very good job into the public. If they get a chance, they probably ought to make use of that service that's being offered. Thank you. And if you got any questions, I'd.
Yeah, Joe, obviously we know that the inventory tax, some form of that will come up. And, you know, sometimes our position gets misstated. I think in the past, we said, "We're all for anything that improves the climate for businesses, but they have to make up the revenue." And I think we're all in agreement with that. Sometimes we don't always, sometimes we say we're against it because there's no plan for the revenue. And that's generally what happened last time, is they went through, they plowed through, and then they worked on the revenue parts last. You need to work on the revenue part first and tell people how they're gonna make up those dollars. Mon County is efficient enough and lucky enough that, you know, we could absorb some of that. But it would destroy half, three quarters of the other counties out there. So they really have to work on the revenue side first before they plow into what they're gonna do. I also heard the governor say that he was interested in taking a look at eliminating the income tax. You know, that'd be very, that'd be very, the big thing to go into again. How do you make up the revenue? I don't think that you guys are gonna go in and approve your budget and log out. This, as you know, we just finished the election cycle. This is the year that anything that can be done will try to be done. So you're gonna get your rest, take your vitamins, because you're gonna have a very, very busy session. With Dr. Smith here, one thing I would like, and I've made this public plea to all of the delegates, whoever before the election, to work with our Health Department in regards to strengthening some of the medical cannabis regulations. We all know that, well, we all know that working with Charleston, that they're not always up to the task. And this is one that really scares us. It should scare the community, the fact that we're going to have so many more dispensaries per capita. Pennsylvania has like one for every 112. We're gonna have one for every 18,000. So I have concern about how that's going to work in the community. And the Health Department's been working on it from their end. But I think that the, I think the real effort ought to be working with the legislature to strengthen whatever they're doing in Charleston. In that way, what's good for Mon County is good for the rest of the state. So anything that the delegates can do to work with the Health Department to that respect, I would appreciate it.
Well, and I certainly would reach out to the Health Department also, that I try to meet with as many groups as I can. As you guys know, I've not fallen out of loop since the last time I served. I kept trying to keep what's going on. And that is one area, but I will tell you, I'm no expert in medical cannabis area whatsoever. And, but I do know that there's problems, there's issues. I've been following what you guys have going through, you know, and the Health Department and everything. So I will offer the same thing to the Health Department. I'd love to sit down with them and meet, and trying to meet with the different law enforcement agencies, setting up fire and EMS. I'm hoping to be able to get back on that committee of the Fire MS and also take in the 911 centers and stuff into that same thing because we truly have some issues that's out there that we have to face. And I agree with Commissioner Secor that I can't see that we're not going to go into session this year. I don't like to talk about the politics of it, but the politics is that, you know, we're controlling super majorities. And with that, the people put a lot of faith that we're going to go down there and do something. And we have to look at some things, the taxing structure, and you're right, Mr. Secor, that they are looking at, at least somebody is. Whether, you know, the income tax could be eliminated, if it is, we know that there's a hole made, so something has to be brought forward. I do know that Senator Carnes got reelected. He had a comprehensive plan that he had in place when he was in session when he lost the last election. I'm sure he'll dust that thing off. I had concerns with that at the time, and I said that last night in a meeting that, you know, I think there's some areas that has to be looked at and worked on there. So I think everything's out there, but I think the main thing is, I just think that that inventory tax will be looked at this year. I will take the concern, and I've already expressed that, not only like you, that you stated, but the way you said it, that Mon Gay County, we can absorb it. I don't like to sound that way, but it is the fact of the matter that we probably could absorb it. As you guys know, we had a meeting last year, and Seton Gilmore County was there. And it's a whole different atmosphere there, every little, and I don't wanna say in a way that I'm not, to the people of this county, that you guys are very good with their tax dollars and you're frugal with it, and that you just are willing to give it up. I know that's not, that's farthest thing from the truth, and you have concerns, especially with the school board because the school board's got some very interesting issues that's going to come up because of their drop in enrollment and how that system works, a year lagging on paying, that they're gonna have to make some decisions that could affect. So I'm also asking that we look at some way of honing the drop in the amount of students this year, hone the boards harmless as much as we can in not taking away the money. So they have to make personnel decisions that will truly be devastating to them next year if, and everything gets back to normal. So those are the issues at least I'm looking at. I will say to you, I have reached out at least to a couple members of the other delegates, trying to arrange a time that we can sit down and meet. And I certainly am looking forward to working with them. So I would tell you all that, that I have no issue with meeting and working with everybody because we're only as, we're only as strong as the weakest link in a chain.
If I could put a bug in your ear, and I wanna go with what Sean said about the Health Department.
Health Department. Unfortunately, sometimes we've noticed during the COVID situation, it's a top-down, and everything's decided at Charleston. And I would like to put a bug in your ear to see that especially like Mon County and some of the other larger health departments have more flexibility. I think what has happened is, you have those smaller ones, and I can understand them making that decision, but it ties our hands. And I really think, you know, we need to be able to have some flexibility to do some things. And that's all I'm throwing out a bug in your ear, because when usually it says, well, we can't separate all 55. Well, you have to look at a difference between our county and a small county that has one or two Health Department people, and that's all I ask.
Well, and to answer a little bit of that, Commissioner Blum, I will tell you that I am a local level type person. I do believe the more decisions that we can drive from Charleston back into the counties, for most part, that it's going to be better served, and especially when you have the entities that we have here. And some counties are smaller, and maybe they need some assistance coming out of Charleston. That's fine. But again, I would, you know, I'll extend that I want to meet with the Health Department whenever possible. I've pretty much put everything aside. I will meet anytime, day or night, as long as I don't have something else. And I believe you're right that we need to look at those type of things. And Charleston don't need any more problems than they have. I can tell you that right now. They've got enough to deal with. Now, the one thing I will tell you about the Health Committee, I will tell you that we were asked to list and order where we would like, what committees we'd like to serve on. And I can guarantee you, Health is one of my lowest that I want to serve on if at all possible, and only because I tell people that just watch me, and whatever I do, do the opposite, and your health will probably be a lot better. But saying that, I do know that more than likely, there will be another chairman of that committee, because that chairman moved on. And I'm not, I don't know in the interim if they appointed another chairman or if the vice chairman is serving. So just as soon as we can find out, some of that is also, and you know well how it works, is the chairman's has a lot of control over what goes on. So as soon as I find out who the chairman is and the vice chairman, I will reach out to them and also try to set up a meeting and tell them, these are the concerns that we're looking at in Montague County. And it could be, maybe they would like to sit down and have a sit-down meeting. You know, we, we as delegates and senators can travel across this state. The final thing is, I did get to speak with Senator Blair last Saturday, who, if you want to handicap it, and I don't know that again, and especially, I won't have any control over that whatsoever on the Senate side, is probably the odds-on favorite. Everybody believes that he will be the Senate President probably coming. I don't know that again. And everything's still fluid and moving forward. But he very much expressed to me, because we were sitting in a location in the western end of the county that didn't have a self-service there, and I mentioned that Catherine Znab is going to have to come down, it's going to put some issues out there, not only for county. So he expressed to me that, and he didn't say if he was president, he just said that this is an issue that this legislature coming up this year is very much going to have to look at and take forward, because, he agreed, when you have a progressive county in Montague County and you're 10 to 12 miles outside of the county seat, and you're not, you don't, not only do you not have cell service, you know, you have no broadband out in that area basically whatsoever, very limited, and you're two miles away from the high school with the learning environment that they're setting up in now. And so those concerns, I have made known to him, and at least I'm getting some encouragement that we are going to do something, because he lost me quickly on all the new forms of ways we can do it and everything like that. And I would have to defer to the experts on that. But anything we do to improve the situation, and especially in the western end of the county, and I'm sure it's all over the county, and I know it is, in the outlying areas, that we need to improve that situation. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
We really appreciate what you have done and what you're about to do for us at the state level. I think it's going to be an interesting legislative session, no matter what, but I am quite happy to see that there is some attention is being paid to, because it's just not the western end. That 10-mile radius, I would say, is a fair assumption in our county, whether it's Snake Hill or the Allen'sville area. So we need to address that for the, particularly for the students in our county. Next, we have Dr. Smith from the Health Department.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for coming.
I need to speak before you. I appreciate the opportunity to meet, and we will certainly be in touch. We try to enlighten our elected officials as to what some of the issues are, because sometimes that gets sort of buried. I have a question to Commissioner Secor. I sent you an email just a moment ago entitled "Slides," and I didn't know if you could bring it up. There's a slide that I would like to show, picture worth a thousand words and all that. I didn't know if that would be-
Yeah. While you're talking, I'll go ahead and have Colleen turn that on, and I'll bring up my mail on air and-
Okay. It's a series of about six PowerPoint slides, and there's one in there that has a graph, and that's the one I wanted to show.
Colleen, I'll send it to the info account, so she can go ahead and do that, get that ready.
Certainly.
You can go ahead and talk to us about-
Yeah, I am unfortunately going to have to give a little bit of some darker news that Montague County once again has entered into a rate of accelerated positive tests. And we use the Harvard University metrics, and so that we can compare county to county and city to city. We always reduce the number of positive cases to a population of 100,000, so that there's an equivalency across the state. And the original color scheme is that if you have one or less cases per 100,000 population, you are in the green. Now, that is different than the green that is used for sports. And then after that, then you go into the yellow, which is up to 10 cases per 100,000. And then the governor introduced another color, which was gold, which takes you up to 15 cases per 100,000. And then the orange takes you up to 25, and above 25, you're in the red. And unfortunately, we once again have entered the red zone, which according to the Harvard metrics, really suggests that there should be some mitigation in the terms of closed... Just scroll through the slides. It's like the fourth or fifth one down.
The TV isn't on, Colleen.
And so we are not sure if the governor's office is going to put forth any additional closure orders. We've heard some messaging from the Cabinet Secretary that there would be no mitigation. And so we're before you today to discuss what we might do locally to try to bring some of the positivity rate under control. And if you can just advance that, I will get to the slide. This is a report that I'm going to give to the Cabinet Secretary this afternoon, and it just happens to have the slide in there we're going to use as our talking points. Continue. This is what I wanted to say. And so I'm sorry that this isn't widely visible to everyone, but this goes from March of this year. This early spike here is back in March when we started having the outbreaks in the nursing homes. And then we had a little bit of community spread, and we stayed below five. We were never down to one. We truly never got into the green. But then this first spike is July. And so in the Fourth of July, we had this spike that just shot us through yellow into gold into orange and then into red. And we stayed in the red for about two weeks until the cases started dying down. We drifted slowly back down into the yellow. And then, excuse me, two months later, we had a second spike, which is in September. And the same thing occurred. The trajectory just shot straight through the roof. One day, we're having, you know, four or five cases per day, then it's 10, and then all of a sudden, you're off to the races, and we're having 25, 30, 50 cases a day. And we stayed a little bit longer in the red this time, and again, slowly drifted down. But the point I also want to make is that we went from here in community to here in community to here in community. So we're seeing an increasing of background community cases. And then here in November, once again, we have shot through the various color schemes, and we are once again into the red. Now, the governor's office and his leadership has suggested that every time a local county goes from yellow to gold, or from gold into orange, or orange into red, that they should set up three testing locations with three lanes of testing in each one to run seven days a week until you are back in the yellow. And I unfortunately have to report that that is not a possibility for us. And so the next thing was, well, the National Guard will do that, and they'll help set this up. Okay, we can use the help. Unfortunately, as it sits right now, of the 55 counties, there are 48 that have Health Departments. Of the 48 Health Departments, 75% are in orange or red. So the entire state, and it's not just the state of West Virginia, the entire country, and not just the entire country, the entire world, this is a pandemic. There are over 10 million cases of COVID in the United States alone. And so in West Virginia, we're seeing increasing numbers, and it is quickly outstripping all of our resources. I want to show you that Montague County has done over 76,000 tests, second only to Canawha County. But if you took the number of population and divided into that, we are leading the state in the number of tests that we have done for occupant or population. And this cumulatively, all the spikes that you see there represent 2,400 cases. My concern is that while it's nice to offer testing, and we're happy to do the community testing, because that's the only way that you can find it, whether you have it or not, but this is just setting up a testing and not having a focus to it, I don't think is the correct mechanism. Because we've done 76,000 tests, and we haven't controlled it yet. And so you can't control the behavior of the populace. If you go to some of the big stores, they're still not wearing masks. Everybody in here is, thank you very much. I appreciate it immensely. But that's not universal across the county. And unfortunately, the leadership for this state has been unwilling to mandate an entire mask order for the entire state. Now, I see that next door, across the Ohio River, that Governor DeWine has mandated that in the state of Ohio, that a mask order is now mandated. And the emphasis shifts to the businesses, and the business owner is responsible for their staff, their employees, and the people that are coming in to do business. They have to wear a mask. Now, we can sit here and argue whether or not that's effective or not effective, but I would submit to you that the Surgeon General of the United States says the three W's are effective. Wash your hands, wear a mask, watch your distance. And if those are simple, not very expensive things that we can do, and we know that that helps prevent the spread of this disease. I think in our community, we are seeing some elements of COVID fatigue that, you know, we've been at this. This is 240 days that we have been into this. That's a better part of a year, and there's no end in sight. And now we are facing the increasing burden of how will we do vaccinations? And so I have a pretty fatigued staff. We are hugely dependent upon the National Guard to assist us in contact tracing, disease investigation, as we are for NIOH, who've been wonderful for us. But between now and Christmas, we're going to lose about 20 people. And I am scrambling to try and get people to come in that we can train to do disease investigation and contact tracing, and yet have additional people to put in the field for the necessary testing. So we are the largest Health Department for a number of employees in the state of West Virginia, because we have the women, infants, and children. We have the most employees. And if we can't do it, I know that Gilmore County and Mango County and the smaller counties where they have three people working have got to be stressed. And I have heard that there are people who have resigned or found that retirement's a little more appealing than working yourself into a tizzy. So unfortunately, I can only say that we're above 25. We are nowhere near the end of this spike. But I would like to begin to focus our testing on those individuals who are contacts, as opposed to just setting it up and waiting for anybody who feels the spirit move them to show up. Then why can't we, if you've been named as a contact, in five to seven days, go get tested? We are trying to organize in our region that on Monday, you can go over to Kingwood, get tested. On Tuesday, you can go to Fairmont. On Wednesday, we test typically at the Rec Center. On Thursday, you can go down to Clarksville, excuse me, and get tested. And in addition, West Virginia University tests on a daily basis, Mon Health tests on a daily basis, Med Express tests on a daily basis. So we have a huge number of opportunities to get tested, either through free mechanisms or through insurance mechanisms. And again, I present to you that we've done 76,000 tests here in this one county. We have 106,000 people. We're getting close to one test per person. I know people go back and get tested multiple times, but just saying that the amount of resources we've thrown to this is quite phenomenal. And so I'm looking, and our talk this afternoon with the leadership and the Cabinet Secretary and Deputy Cabinet Secretary is to try to bring a little bit better focus to this so that our efforts are a little bit more pointed and we're getting better results. And so the other thing that I think that we need to consider, and what we're going to suggest to them, is a reduction of gatherings. Part of the thing that we have seen in businesses is the bargaining, the people, oh, no, 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 my baker needs to be in there. And some people are telling their employees when they've been named as a contact and they should be in quarantine, go ahead and show up.
Yes.
And then they end up with a bunch of more cases, and it's like, well, how did that happen? Well, it's because they were in quarantine, they should not be interacting with the community. And so even eight months into this, nine months into this, we're still finding people who don't really understand how A leads to B leads to C. And so people are reluctant to tell you that they've been named as a contact. They're reluctant to tell you that they're aware that somebody in their party is positive. And some people frankly cannot afford two weeks off for quarantine. And so they sort of try and hide by not presenting themselves as well. So, you know, our message to the community is that not being compliant, not being honest, is not leading us anywhere but back into the danger zone. And I worry that at some point in time, we may end up having additional mitigation. You can see how other states, New York City is certainly clamping down. Pennsylvania has said that West Virginians are not allowed into the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania unless they are essential employees. And so these are trying times, and we need to focus our efforts so that we get the most bang for the buck. Now, I wanted to say, because I know that during these stressful times, there are well-intentioned people that sometimes say things that get misinterpreted. people that sometimes say things that get misinterpreted. And as the county health officer, I get briefings all day long. I probably get 200, 300 emails a day, one of which comes from the Health Command at West Virginia University Hospitals system.
I was going to say, most of them probably come from me.
Yeah. And the other 209.
I've been good on you.
And I have heard some rumors that people are concerned about the availability of hospital beds, et cetera. And I am unaware that this is an issue. I can tell you that in this morning's report that I have received as an email, that there are 155 ICU beds within West Virginia University. That's 97 adult that are staffed. And that's always a key thing. It's not that you have an empty bed, but you have a nurse and people to take care of them. So there's 97 adult staffed beds and 58 pediatric beds that are staffed. And the current admission is that there's 13 people in ICU. So I think it's pretty clear that we are not busting loose at the seams. It is true that the hospitalization rate has increased over time. As I think we can see from this diagram, as we go into the red, there's more community spread, there are more people getting sick. People above the age of 50 tend to have more medical issues and a worse outcome from this. Luckily, and I'm going to knock on wood, we are holding steady at seven deaths from March. And that's about all I have to say. I'm sorry, it's dark days, but it's better that you be briefed on the reality of the situation. And I would offer, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Dr. Smith, we moved, they developed the second metric. What was the timeframe around that? That was around the September timeframe when we were in that second spike.
Correct.
So that's our positivity rate.
Yes, sir.
And that number is primarily driven by that 76,000.
Correct.
Number right there. And we're, I mean, even though.
We're green.
We're green, according to that. But that's only a product of how many people were getting tested.
Correct.
So now that we see, and if you go to the DHHR site, it's down right now. But if you look at the state in terms of the infection rate, which is this number, there are 26 counties that would be in red. If you look at the state in terms of the positivity rate, there's one county, Mango, that would be red. Do you think maybe at the state level, they need to, plus somewhere along the line, I thought when we first did the positivity rate, that we had 3%, 4%, 5% was our markers. But now I see counties that are 9% and they're still.
Gold.
Yeah.
Orange.
Yeah. So somewhere along the line, they increase that bandwidth for someone to qualify as gold, or yellow, or green. So one thing is, it's, in the thought process when we went this direction is, we said, no, we have to have a new education. We need to start getting more people tested. We need to break the cycle. Maybe we are, part of this is, you know, part of this is we are breaking the cycle because we're doing so many tests and we're catching so many people that may not otherwise be caught. But it's not, you know, this isn't tapering off. So I don't want to, I do think that testing is, we still need to focus a lot on testing. You talked about testing and trying to just focus on who you're testing. I still think that, you know, we still have a lot of asymptomatic people out there that are spreading this, and we don't know who they are. So somehow, we got to figure out a way to get to those people. That's where the problem is. It was working in the beginning, but now that we've had this spike, we can see that the positivity rate isn't a good indication of where we're at, because all the, you know, we have 26 counties that are burning red. Well, according to the positivity rate, we only have one. So maybe they need to maybe push those percentages back down so that a lower number triggers a higher response rate. You know, so three or four would be red, or something like that, to push those numbers down. So we're focusing, because it's taking, it's kind of taking the focus off of the issue. Because I think a lot of people are like, wow, we're green, we don't need to worry about it. The concern in this county is, you know, the actual testing we're doing is a good byproduct of West Virginia University doing a lot of testing. A lot of people are concerned that as they go on break, that that testing is going to slow up. Do you know how much W is going to continue doing their testing? Or do you know if it's, they won't have students here, so they'll stop or slow down their testing?
Right. So it's going to be a phased withdrawal, if you will. So next Saturday, excuse me, next Friday is the 20th, and that is the last day of in-person classes. I'm just parroting what I have heard. I don't mean to speak for West Virginia University. But on that Friday, people will stop meeting in class. Those upper-level people who are still taking class online will continue to finish out the semester. And we know that there are many individuals, beyond freshmen, that have contracts for housing within this community and within the county and surrounding areas. And we're not sure that they are going to be leaving through the holidays. Many families are saying, well, let's put off Thanksgiving and let's see how things go. So my anticipation is that there will be some people leaving, but there will be some good amount that will stay. West Virginia University, is my understanding, will continue to test all the athletes on a weekly basis, all of their sports teams. Some are club sports like hockey that are not an NCAA sanctioned university sport, but they're still here. They'll get tested. The international students will not be going home. They'll be tested. Health Department, we will be doing weekly testing for the foreseeable future. So right now, West Virginia University is doing some 1,000, 1,200 cases of testing a week. And we're doing probably an average of 500 a week. So there will be a reduction. Our numbers probably will stay the same, because we're doing community testing. I think it fluctuates depending upon, you know, what the word on the street is and what the level of concern is. And we certainly hope that people come. It's free testing, it's just a matter of, you know, getting your nose done. And so we will do this, and then I am just sort of standing by to see what decision may be made by the leadership at West Virginia University regarding their spring semester. And so I don't know, can't speak for them.
Is this an instance where we may need to call on our two hospitals to, you know, help the community and take on more testing, you know, offer their resources? And that's easy for me to say. But this, I mean, the testing itself is actually reimbursable by the.
State, correct.
By the state.
Right. It was $22 per test, and then got up to $25 per test. We have put that idea forward before. Instead of depending upon local health departments to reinvent the wheel, you already have these drive-throughs, maximize their utilization, bring in the opportunity for people to get that testing. That has not been well-received for whatever reason.
Because the answer isn't pushing it down to the health department to do it. I mean, you guys, in addition, you know, absent this pandemic, you guys would be fully, fully engaged in other things that you're not getting to because you're all jumping in to help with this. So we're suffering in other areas of the county because you can't focus on those things.
Well, I would suggest it probably is more of a regional. Preston County has stopped doing family planning, and Marion County, before their Board of Health voted to suspend all family planning efforts. So now we have three counties that we're trying to provide services for, but only have full-time, four full-time nurses. And so getting them to juggle the clinics, plus getting them to be involved with the swabbing, and getting them to be involved with vaccination, and getting them to be involved with disease investigation and contact tracing, it's a real challenge.
Well, I know what we say is only words, but we deeply do appreciate what your health department employees do. Obviously, you must be the biggest cheerleader, you know, to keep them engaged, because 240 days of no end in sight, I can see what morale would be like. But, you know, I hope they understand, Ben. I hope that, you know, that the public understands, you know, how much these people are doing and what their lives have, I mean, everybody's life's been turned upside down this year. But specifically those individuals who are right in the middle of it and living it and also have their own families and stuff to worry about, I can't thank them enough. We can't thank them enough.
Yeah, and I do want to thank you, because what has now happened, and I think you hit two major things. One is, what'd you call it? People are burnt out. And not only your workers, but the people burnt out saying, okay, election's over, I've been six months, I've had it, I'm just not going to wear, not realizing it may not affect the national, it will affect your family and those businesses around you. So that's the one concern that really worries me. The second thing is, I will call it the Chicken Little Syndrome, that somebody heard a rumor, and I'm really glad I went right to you, and you immediately addressed the concern about the ICU beds, but now it's on Facebook, it's on the media.
Got to be true.
It's got to be true. And I think the most important thing the three commissioners can do with you is make sure, and I'll look to the newspaper, and Ben's been wonderful, have the facts correct. And that is the most important thing we can do as a elected body, to make sure the facts are correct, and when there are these misinformation, that we immediately deal with it.
There are little tiny nuggets of good news out there. I mean, isn't it nationwide, the death rate.
Correct.
Has severely.
As well as ours, yes.
Yeah.
And so, no, I think that that doesn't get recognized, or kind of hard to celebrate that. But recognition that the number of people that were dying early in this.
Right.
Were huge.
Right.
And now it is, it is really low nationally, and particularly low even in our state, which we have lived in fear because of West Virginia's elderly population, lot of, you know, extra medical issues that many people carry with them. We thought that if it got into the community, we would have a lot of deaths. But earlier recognition and understanding the hospitalization and the appropriate care to give people has really diminished the death rate. And so we're thankful for our colleagues on the work in the big house and keep people alive. That's, sometimes they don't get recognition for that as well.
You indicated a loss of 20 individuals. Is that a hard number that, of staff?
We have, we have 12 people from NIOSH.
Oh, okay.
And they have been with us since the very first outbreak in July. And we beg and plead with Admiral Kitt and with the state to please have these individuals stationed with us. But for the last five months, they haven't done their day job.
Correct.
And so, you know, some of that work needs to get done. And then the National Guard that is with us, of which there are 10, many of these young men and women are currently enrolled in school, and they're trying to finish their degrees. And they may be going on to other military training or civilian things. And they haven't been able to do their work. Now, I have heard through the grapevine that for the National Guard Bureau, the, I'm searching for the right word, the time of their duty has been extended through May of '21.
Yeah. I know you said you have a meeting this afternoon, and I think I want to clear too, when we get out correct information, the county commission, because they believe you're in the county, we can just shut everything down. And I, and the three of us realize that. But unfortunately, when people get frustrated, they look towards their elected leaders. And what I'm going to ask, when you meet with the people today, if there are some other suggestions that we could immediately do. I mean, I know we could request, I mean, I don't know what would happen if we specifically asked, like you said, like Ohio, that all businesses and employees now need to wear a mask. But I don't know if we can enforce that because statutorily. The other concern I want to have, and I come from a little bit different angle that I hope the public understands. Huntington just shut down their food programs. We have, next week, 1,000 turkeys and meals were given out. We have a program tomorrow. If this gets worse, and the Mountaineer Food Bank says you have to shut down, we're going to have other problems. And that's what I'm trying to say. It isn't just going to the store. You have all these other people and children who cannot be fed and not have those resources. So that's why I said, and the community has to work together, and that's what's scaring me. Huntington just announced they cannot do it. So I don't know what's going to happen to us next week. So it's just something else I want to get out there to the public, that when you don't wear a mask, you're also affecting your neighbors in many ways. And that's what I'd just like to bring out.
No, those are excellent points, and nothing happens in a vacuum.
Yes.
We're all connected in this.
Thank you.
I do have one last thing, just to bring you guys up to speed, because I don't like y'all being blindsided. I'm in the process, in my spare time, of writing the Attorney General a letter. Our medical malpractice went up 40%. And the reason that we are told is because the insurance underwriters are not sure about the increased liability of us being out into the field doing testing. Now, I haven't killed anybody with a Q-tip ever, and so I'm not sure that this isn't a little bit of, personally, I would feel that maybe this has taken advantage of the situation here. But I wanted to bring that to Attorney General's attention, because it seems that it was a little, we got blindsided by that, so.
Well, perhaps the commission might also stand behind your.
Yes.
Letter that you choose to write.
I'll be happy to show you, gentlemen, a copy.
That would be great. We would definitely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
I don't see any other elected officials. So we'll go to reports from county commissioners. Sean?
Since the last meeting, last Thursday, I had my MAP Executive Committee meeting. And then we had the conference call for the Daybrook Tower discussion that afternoon. Friday, we had staff reports. Monday, obviously, we had canvassing. And again, I want to thank and congratulate Carrie Blaney and all of her staff on the wonderful job that they did with the election and processing the election in a timely and efficient manner. And any of the candidates, any of the winning candidates, and any of the other, you know, anybody that gets out there and puts their name on the ballot ought to be commended for making themselves available to be part of the solution instead of just complaining. So I want to thank everybody. Tuesday, I met with Commissioner-elect Arnett, and he'll tell you guys when he's here, the first thing I told him, that commission is a politics-free zone, that you have to run as a party to get elected, but once you're here, we, politics never come up in our discussions and our deliberations. We're here to work for the citizens of this county, and it doesn't matter whether you're Republican, Libertarian, Green Party, whatever. You take that off, and the most important thing is the citizens whenever we deliberate and we work here, up here. Wednesday was Veterans Day. Thanks to all of our veterans that work for the county, our citizens that are veterans. You know, West Virginia's always had a high percentage of veterans that give a lot to, so that we can sit up here and deliberate. So I'm always a little bit of a loss of words to talk, you know, to express the thanks that I feel for our veterans, because I never served myself. I just, I didn't have that opportunity. So I really do appreciate everything they do. Thursday, I had a Red Team meeting, a Development Authority meeting, and then I had a call with our Fleet Management Services. Today's a regular meeting, and we have staff reports. Again, thank you, Dr. Smith, and your staff. I really do appreciate everything that you guys do. Joe, congratulations, and thank you for putting yourself out there to work for us. I know you will. I know you, the only part, anything I worry about with you, Joe, is turning you off every once in a while so that you can get some rest and take care of yourself. So thank you so much. COVID testing, thanks, Dr. Smith, at work. Again, I continue to get other people to go out, and I try to lead by example and go and get tested myself. So I took my family out. My daughters were kicking and screaming, but they went ahead and did it. And it wasn't, it's not too bad, it's just a little tukly.
And I forgot while I was at podium, I want to sincerely thank the county commission for providing heaters. Yesterday was a little more cold than we had anticipated, and those gowns are pretty flimsy. And so you all came to our rescue, and they delivered those, thank you all. And it was, it was toasty in the afternoon, so we thank you very much for helping us out with that.
And Joe, when you were talking, one thing that you said that's, people ought to take notice of, you know, you don't have to know everything about the subject that you're working on. The important thing is to get the right people in the room, offer them whatever help you can to fix their, or to implement their solutions, and get out of the way. And that's the way I think everybody operates, you know, it takes an intelligent person to realize how much he doesn't know about something, and I appreciate your approach. If you don't know about it, you're first to say, "Hey, I don't know, but tell me who does know, and I'll get them involved and let them figure out a solution." So thank you. That's all I have. Tom?
Okay. Yeah, I want to thank everyone who voted and all those people who were involved in the election process. And I thought it was very interesting, two years ago, we had individuals from Philadelphia come down and look at our equipment. And the equipment that they are using now in Philadelphia is the exact same equipment we have here. So we were ahead of them. And I do want to reach out and then again, say that I'm extremely proud of my daughter who stepped out of her comfort zone. She is one of the voting judges for the Second Ward in Philadelphia, and used our equipment, and everything went as planned. So I really want to thank that. I also want to congratulate all those who won and those who didn't win but were willing to run for office. It is not an easy situation. Second, I do want to also add, and I agree, I was there at the COVID testing, I want to thank Lee and his staff, and I want to do a shout-out to Bobby Doyle and MPE. And I really do, because MPE needs to understand, the people need to understand. I called Bobby, who allowed me to use his name, so when we called MPE, in less than 45 minutes, they stopped what they were doing, brought heaters out because they thought it was that important. And I really want to thank them, because they could have, they had other things to do, but I appreciate it, and they wanted, and I appreciate my commissioners, because I asked them if we could get that, those heaters, and I didn't want to make that decision by myself, and they jumped right out and said, "Yes, let's do it immediately." So I'm really proud of that. And the final thing is, we have a food giveaway tomorrow at Mason Dixon Park from 11 to 1. And again, as I said, we are very concerned about the COVID situation. We have 850 turkeys and dinners that we already have planned to give out to people. The last thing, and the worst thing that could happen is if we wouldn't be allowed to do this for the food area. So hopefully, we can monitor this, and the people, please, I agree, the three W's, I like that. Wash your hands, wear a mask, and watch your distance. I really like that, and hopefully, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was happy to see the use of our 4H and Extension Outdoor Show Arena being used for this, for this testing. That, that pleases me. I did meet yesterday with our facilities director, Mr. Bobby Doyle, and this was concerning lighting on our courthouse square. We had a good meeting, and it will be brought up in staff reports, I'm certain, later. I was excited to see the mountaintop beverage announcement regarding MUB and the industrial park with the design of the Harmony Grove Interchange Tip Proposal Study. I do predict that there's going to be a lot of brightness in our county coming in the future. Again, I want to thank my fellow commissioners. I did not participate in the canvassing, since the race that involved me and the commissioner-elect was so actually tight, that I did not want to give the appearance that I would have any influence in a campus vote. This, of course, but the onus of work on both of you, for which I thank you very greatly. I won't say that I missed it, because.
Nine and a half hours.
Nine and a half hours, yes. Canvassing is not the most exciting part of being a county commissioner, I might add. But thank you to, you know, thank you to all, and I appreciate, I appreciate those efforts. Joe, I can only wish you the greatest of luck for us down in Charleston. I'm looking forward to what you can do, particularly for our firemen. You know, I, I've become very fond of that group, and I think that whatever we can do to help and aid them at the state level, certainly be, you know, be a blessing. With that, I'll ask for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
We are adjourned. Thank you.